Going to get started here.
You can't even hear me.
All right, we're going to get started. Oh, there we go. Welcome to everyone that's here. We're thrilled to have you here at our board meeting. This is a staff meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, October 14th, 2025. We are going to do introductions from the dais first.
Kristi Rieschel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Commissioner.
Hamilton County Commissioner, Alicia Reese.
Holly Christman, Assistant County Administrator.
And Ann Schoolly, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
I'm County Commissioner Denise Streethouse. Welcome to all of you that are here. We've got an exciting presentation this morning. In fact, we're going to flip the agenda. We're going to take item number two first so that we can hear the presentation first. And so I did, before we get started, want to recognize all of the Hamilton County DV Task Force partners. I know not all of you are speaking this morning, but I do want to recognize the work that has gone on with this task force. I know it's been intense and intentionally intense because it's an issue that we're all grappling with, and there are many partners in Hamilton County that are working towards solutions. So I just want to recognize everybody on the DV Task Force, which includes the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, the Hamilton County Court of Domestic Relations, the Hamilton County Clerk of Courts, Hamilton County Court of Common Pleas, the Hamilton County Municipal Court, the Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office, the City of Cincinnati Prosecutor's Office, the City of Cincinnati Police Department, Hamilton County Adult Probation Department, the Hamilton County Commission on Women and Girls, the Hamilton County Emergency Communications, Cincinnati Animal Care Shelter and Resource Center, the Legal Aid Society of Greater Cincinnati, the Ohio Crime Victim Justice Center, TriHealth Cares, UC College of Law DV Clinic, Women Helping Women, and the YWCA of Greater Cincinnati. So thank you all for being part of the solution here when it comes to domestic violence. So I would, commissioners, if you want to make comments, we can do it either now or after the presentation. After? Okay. All right, we've got three people presenting. We've got Judge Anne Flotman with Domestic Relations Court, Sheriff Charmaine McGuffey with Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, and Pavin Pareek with the Hamilton County Clerk of Courts. Please come forward. We're looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you so much, commissioners. Thank you for hosting, and thanks, everyone, for being here for what we find is really the cutting edge of what we as citizens, law enforcement, partner agencies are going to do to help solve domestic violence situations and help support women, men, anyone who is a target of domestic violence. And it is a very complicated arena. As you just pointed out, when we saw the slide there, the number of partners that come to this meeting, and not all of them are even listed here because there are other people that come in. And the meeting is designed because we've been, we're two years into this now, almost two years into these biweekly meetings, and we have gotten so much done, a significant amount of work. Our numbers are trending up regarding safety of women who experience domestic violence, anyone who experiences domestic violence. And, you know, part of it is, you know, connecting what the courts do, how they decide things, and having them communicate, but also law enforcement. Law enforcement needs to be a very integral part of that discussion because we can learn from the courts, from victims of domestic violence, how we can do better. And we have done that. You know, our job as law enforcement in the state of Ohio is to go out and serve these protection orders, or when we find people who have a protection order and haven't been served. It's law enforcement's responsibility to do that job. And then the very, very dangerous job of showing up at the homes in the middle of these heated, sometimes very tragic situations, it's our job to intercede, but do so with the direction of not just the court, but the help agencies that we named here, you know, who help us with those nuances. And Women Helping Women, the divert program where one of, a person comes to support the victims and kind of guide law enforcement, as I said, through some of that nuanced, how, who, who is best served in the system and how do we do that? But I also want to mention to you that it's a very dangerous realm that we step into. I mean, we have unprecedented in this Ohio, this state of Ohio, victims who have been murdered with domestic violence issues, murdered in those arenas. And along with them are the tragic stories of the police officers who showed up to do the right thing, who oftentimes found themselves in lethal situations, having to defend themselves, and unfortunately, sometimes paying the ultimate price for law and order and for protection of women, which should be an inalienable right of any woman, any person in the state of Ohio and the United States to have protection from someone who is committing violence, violence directed at a person who lives with them or is an intimate partner with them. So we have put a tremendous amount of work into this arena. If I can see the second slide, please. I'd just like to just point out, this was the beginning. We've expanded on this. I talked about this the first time we were over here, within that first year that we were working. We created this, this is a mindset right here. This is outlining problems, issues, who needs to come to the table. We've worked through those issues, and we have more to do, lots more to do. And I want to note to you that we've been so successful. Judge Flotman has done a tremendous amount of heavy lifting, has had all the partners that come to this meeting. And we have done great things, which are going to be outlined for you. I will tell you that I am working with law enforcement to create training, to encourage all law enforcement to come to the table and help us serve these protection orders, and also when we need to remove people from homes, when we need to have victims feel safe, we've created a room in the courthouse so that women, anyone can go and use that, any victim of domestic violence can use that room to be isolated, to talk to their attorneys, to have a moment to breathe with their children, sometimes in tow, to get through some of these just arduous legal processes. So we've scaled, you know, we scaled down and up, meaning scaled down the processes that women have, the hoops they have to jump through because that's so frustrating for them to continue to go and then feel like, I'm not getting anywhere because I have too many, too many hoops to jump through, too many people are dropping the ball. So we have strengthened those processes, along with, I will say, the new law is helping tremendously on strangulation. So we have now partnered with the agency that's named here on the front, TriHealth Cares. They are the expert, leading experts in this strangulation realm, which we find is happening to women quite a bit, and we are now able to prosecute that. That is a huge win, and all the technology that's surrounding that, we are educating that out to law enforcement and others, and also working with the evidence protection, right? We want to work with Dr. Samarco and make sure that we have excellent evidence protection, that our officers are doing the right thing in that regard. So having said that, the last thing I'll leave you with before the next speaker is, we've also initiated, and we're still working on it, because when you build something from scratch, oftentimes it has a little bit of stops and starts, and that is the Cincinnati Animal Cares Initiative, which means that we will have the ability to take animals in a foster situation because sometimes people don't want to leave the home because they don't want to leave the family dog with this person who is just, you know, beyond violent. So we want to be able to, to build that very responsibly, and we are, and we think we will get volunteers to help us with that foster animal care program. So we're working in that arena, and I just want to tell you what a tremendous thing it is, particularly for me, the sheriff, to walk into that biweekly meeting and have a huge table full of partners that come every time. And they come with meaningful information, they interact with each other, they trade phone numbers, conversations, and we have made great inroads. And I want to thank the county commission for helping us in that regard and supporting this effort in the month of Domestic Violence Month. So I will ask Judge Flotman to come up and expand on the domestic relations ideas regarding this.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you again for making time for us this morning. I want to also thank you for lending us Mary Mauney from your Commission on Women and Girls. She's been an integral part, you may not get her back, integral part of our, the work that we're doing. So to follow up on what Sheriff had to say, let me give you a two years ago, one year ago, going forward look. So two years ago, I'm at home after work, my phone rings, I look down at Sheriff McGuffey. If you haven't had that experience, your heart kind of stops a little bit, like, and Sheriff was explaining to me, we need to have a conversation about the, how, what you're doing and what we're doing, what you as the Domestic Relations Court is doing, serving, or sending us out to serve these orders and what we're doing, serving them. And from that, we have grown this amazing task force that has addressed so many issues. So one year ago, about now, I became the administrative judge of DR Court, and I created the dedicated domestic violence team. A couple of the magistrates are here with me today who serve on, who volunteered to hear, two of them, hear domestic violence cases all day, every day, which will wear out your soul, but they do it. As a result, now, one year after creating the, after, so two years after becoming part of the task force, one year after the domestic violence team, and all the information and partnerships that we have created with everybody at the big table, as Sheriff referred to them, we've been able to decrease the number of women and men, 20% are men, petitioners who come to us for help, who give up. It used to be running above 80% of the people would initiate the process, and at some point, for some reason, would quit showing up, would voluntarily dismiss. Now, because of our strong partnerships with Women Helping Women, with the YWCA, with law enforcement, with TriHealth, et cetera, the whole list that you saw, we have brought that number down into the low 60%. That may not sound enormous, but that means that from September of '24 to September of '25, over 200 more people stuck with it, got in order, protected themselves, protected their children. So that is meaningful to me. Going forward, I want to talk to you briefly and introduce you to the concept of the blueprint. So the blueprint is what happens when you have a great task force like this, and then people retire and they move on and they get reassigned, and all the work that's been done gathers dust in a drawer. To prevent that from happening, I believe it was the community in Minnesota started the blueprint. Franklin County has now enacted it. So I'm going to be coming back to you. I was at the Budget Committee meeting, so I know I'm not going, coming back to you to ask for money, but I will be coming back to you to ask for support going forward so we can finalize this. We've had a huge gain. Raquel Howard Smith, who's the director of YWCA, is here and working with Jennifer Maloney, who's on our task force in the YWCA. They have agreed to host. We need like a home base for the blueprint. We're going to need a full-time administrator for the blueprint to, to memorialize everything that we have done in a memorandum, and then enact it and monitor it and support it. So step one, thanks to Ms. Howard Smith and Ms. Maloney for making that done. They've agreed to at least host it, to get us out of the gate. So looking forward to that. I just want to give you a couple statistics to remind everybody why this is so important. The Ohio Domestic Violence Network, ODVN, who are amazing, has done their annual fatality review. If you read about it in the Enquirer or saw it on WCPO, you'll see that the number of fatalities has gone up. I also want to say that while that is awful, that hopefully is a, is a result of more law enforcement and more boots on the ground recognizing what domestic violence is and seeing it. So that the numbers may be going up, but that may demonstrate an increase in awareness, which is a good thing, along with obviously the not good thing, the increase in that. So we had in the last year, we had three teen girls killed by their boyfriends, three pregnant women murdered by their baby's father. We had 144 people shot in domestic violence situations, 108 cases, only 12 of those survived. 84 of all deaths in domestic violence were a result of gun violence. 55% of the perpetrators had a criminal history, 38% of cases with minors had custody issues, which is where we come in. And then worst of all, of course, we lost some critical law enforcement officers in Northern Kentucky and in Ohio who are undertaking this terrible job. Probably the best part of this task force has been our understanding of what we need to tell the officers, what information we can give them. We've improved our directions to the sheriff so they know, they have some idea of what they're walking into. So with that, I'm going to ask Clerk Pareek to come and tell you about the wonderful progress he's made at the Help Center. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Thank you. Good morning. I also believe there's a fourth speaker, Christine Hasser.
Christine Hasser, yep.
She'll be after me. First of all, I just, look, I want to thank the commissioners for all of your help and your assistance with helping fund our Help Center. It has made a difference in the lives of people across our community, and our latest request to you last year was to help fund the expansion in Domestic Relations Court, and it has been incredibly successful already, even though we're still getting set up. As far as the priorities of getting into Domestic Relations Court, one, we were having issues with overflow and conflict with the juvenile court, and so this attorney, Olivia Davis-Razusa, will be helpful in managing that. And I'm listing these priorities in descending value of their priority for today to also complement the services of the clinic that already exists in Domestic Relations Court, kind of like how the rest of the Help Center works in together with legal aid and not against them. We're working together as a system, but primarily for today to support domestic violence survivors. So when we first brought Olivia on board in July of 2025, her first task was to sit down with the judges and magistrates of Domestic Relations Court and figure out, what are your real needs and what are the things that we can address? And the common reply was to better serve domestic violence survivors. So we got lucky and timing, working with the University of Cincinnati College of Law, that they had a need for some more help to lead their domestic violence and civil protection order clinic, which Olivia is now doing. So starting this fall semester, she has now started to take over that process. This has allowed us to strengthen our ties with student involvement and the services of domestic violence survivor community, while also building the knowledge base necessary to competently serve those people in need. We've also created a partnership with Women Helping Women to refer cases that the students will handle as part of this clinic, while also sending referrals for limited legal advice appointments that Olivia will conduct with student observation. Some of the work that Olivia is already doing, as we're waiting for the physical space for the Help Center to come online, she's been tabling three times a week in front of Domestic Relations Court. She had, and we are hoping that the full center will be open by the end of the month, once all the furniture, everything's moved in. She's also already published a protection order guide and translated it into Spanish and French. We know that these are issues that affect not only native English speakers, but people that speak multiple languages, and we, and that is the first step of many that we're taking to ensure that one of the barriers that too many people have in accessing justice is language, and we need to reduce that. What we're also hopeful for with this partnership with the students and UC Law is to help grow the practitioners in this space. There just simply aren't enough attorneys doing this type of work right now, nor are there enough attorneys that are fully versed in the issues that come before them in this type of work. Our hope is that longer term, we're going to have an even more robust ecosystem around here of protecting domestic violence survivors by getting students involved in this work early so that they will learn how to do this work, how to do it well, as they go out into the world and become full-fledged attorneys. Ideally, at the end of the day, we will be fully integrated with Domestic Relations Court and especially with the protection order process and supplementing their efforts to help unrepresented parties in any type of case. The last thing, we touched on it briefly in the past, but just going forward, we are continuing to work across our organization, but especially in the Domestic Relations unit to make sure that we have trauma-informed staff. We need staff, our, our staff are the frontline. When you're coming to court, when you need to file something, when you need to ask somebody, what are my rights, what can I do, you're coming to our staff. We need to make sure that our staff are properly trained to ensure that they can spot people that need help, and that they can talk to them in the ways that they need to be talked to, to get the help that they need, that they also know what the resources are that are available. And that is why all of these partnerships, all 15 or so agencies that are working together are critical, because everybody touches a different part in the life cycle of a domestic violence case. And if we don't all work together, then we're going to leave people behind, and that is exactly the opposite of what we're all trying to do here. So with that, I will cede, hopefully, I haven't gotten too far over time, whatever time is left, to Christine Hasser with TriHealth. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Christine Hasser with TriHealth, the Center for Abuse and Rape Emergency Services, otherwise known as the CARES Program. And thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to be here today and for me to speak. Just to kind of give you an idea, the first slide, please. The TriHealth CARES Program, we are a team of registered nurses with additional training and forensics, and we provide free of charge to survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and elder abuse, age 14 and above, exams at any one of our TriHealth Emergency Department locations throughout the greater Cincinnati area. There's somebody on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and we're really proud to be able to serve this, serve this community this way. Next slide, please. So in any given month, when I took over the role as the coordinator of this program in 2021, and I started collecting data on every single one of our cases, and what I learned was, as many learned was as many, 70 to 75% of our domestic violence exams involved non-fatal strangulation. And we know through our research and our studies that their risk factor for homicide goes up over 700%. So we're always trying to hone our skills and improve our practice, and that's why we're so grateful to be a part of this task force, so that we can hear things that maybe we're missing. We know that about 50% of the time, women who are strangled non-fatally have nothing physically that you can see, so it's often diminished, minimized, and unreported and unnoticed by our law enforcement agencies. So we really tried to work very hard to improve our practice, and one of the things that we did was we created strangulation kits with our evidentiary swabs at the neck area when these people report strangulations, and we did this with the work and the help of the Crime Lab and a lot of our law enforcement agencies. So we've really tried to improve that. It's important to note that TriHealth is the only healthcare system involved in this task force, and we're thankful to be there, but we're also the only healthcare system in the greater Cincinnati area that, that provides the domestic violence exams. We're the only ones doing this practice. I've also served as an expert witness in this county on strangulation, and I, I really try to, along with my other full-time nurse, really try to prepare our nurses to be, serve as factual witnesses in all of these exams that we do. So I think I speak for every nurse on our team, and there's 31 of them, that they're all very passionate about this cause, and they're ready to serve in that, that arena if need be. Next slide, please. So you know, everything that we do is, we're registered nurses with that training and forensic, so we connect the medical piece with the investigative piece. So sometimes there's things that people might miss, you know, the, the emergency room physician, the emergency room nurse that we try to hone in on. But you know, being a part of this task force allows me to identify those gaps in our process, because it really does take a village, and I'm only one small part of the puzzle, and I might think that we're doing something great, and it might be a process that's driving the law enforcement officer crazy. So it's really helpful to have, be at this table and hear that input on ways that we can try to improve our, our process. And part of, you know, what, what I also do in this role is try to support my community partners with education. So there's things that they may not look at from a medical standpoint, law enforcement officers, first responders, advocacy partners. So I really try to help support that role at that table and be a part of those conversations and provide that support whenever I can. And thank you, you know, to my task force partners for allowing me to be at this table. So if there's anything else I can do to continue to improve, I appreciate that input. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all four of you. So you know, the, the beauty of this, and I think the confidence that you have that you're going to get something done is the collaboration, and so many powerful partners sitting at the table, determined to get something done here. So I, I have two questions. The first is, you know, we, we talked about some of the gaps and, and how you're trying to connect and fill the gaps for the survivors of domestic violence, and I, I understand that all the work really is geared to supporting those individuals. So could you walk through for, I, I am, I'm familiar with some of the programs, but having a hard time figuring out the connection. So when, when a victim of domestic violence is, is out, the, the emergency response is out on the call, divert is called, divert comes in, intervenes, and creates a safe environment for that woman and the kids, then what happens? And what is this process that is, is, as you say, cumbersome, and what are you solving for?
Yes, and so thank you very much for that question. What, I'll, I'll speak to part of it, and that's exactly why we have to have these, these partners at the table, because oftentimes, just what you exemplified for us, people know a piece of the process. And until you understand how the entire cycle works, the entire process, which is what we end up educating and communicating to the victims of domestic violence. So, and it's one of the reasons why they stay. So you know, law enforcement shows up, sometimes the offender is on scene, sometimes not. So we will go out and actively search for this person or arrest that person as we deem appropriate. Sometimes the situation's called for us to remove particular people from the household, and we do that as well, and try to support the person, and also prosecute if there are violations of the protection order. Now oftentimes, and the judge will, I'm sure, want to step up here and speak about what the judicial process brings to this, but oftentimes, these offenders can be put on electronic monitoring, and that does allow law enforcement an additional layer of observation and a way to arrest, if necessary, to keep these guys in line, and I say guys, but anyone who commits these violations. And so our process of law enforcement is much more at that front end and supporting, and also, you know, giving way to something that hadn't been done in the past, and then I'll ask the judge to come up, and that is understanding that we don't have all the answers. Law enforcement isn't walking in with all the answers. We now know that we can be in a situation and be humble enough to say to victims and so forth, this is a person here who's also an expert. This is a person who can guide you, who can help us, who is an equal to us walking in the door. And I think that's such an important message for anyone to hear that's in the middle of, of all this chaos. So I'll ask the judge to come up and explain the court process once we have made those determinations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse. To your question specifically about what gaps we're closing, so let me give you some specific examples. One of the things we've done is, thanks to Women Helping Women, we have opened an office for Women Helping Women in our court. We used to call them if somebody needed them. That person might give up and go away waiting. Now there's somebody there the entire time that the court is open. That has been wonderful. They have a French-speaking advocate now, and you know, many, many of our residents come from African nations where French is a language they can't understand much, much more easily than English. A second would be, we now give the petitioner an extra copy. The sheriff historically has to serve these orders, however, all law enforcement agencies are empowered to do so. Some of the agencies in Hamilton County, some of our police force have not been trained and are not comfortable doing it. We give, the sheriff's service ends at 4 o'clock. We take orders up until 3:00. We used to only listen, take them until 2:00. Now we take them until 3:00, and if the sheriff can serve it, they do. If they cannot, the petitioner is instructed by our magistrates to take the order to local law enforcement and say, please serve this for me. Please get him out of my house. Please go get my children out of that situation. Because I have now wonderful contact with Sergeant Snow, who directs that part of the task force, we were alerted that Springfield Township, who historically does a great job, had not done one. We were able to fix that yesterday in a minute, and the person was served appropriately. This is a little bit out of my bailiwick. You can ask Ms. Zurfus to come up, but Sue Zurfus is the new chief, chief, what, chief prosecutor for the city, and she and Christine Hassert, whom you heard from, who's an invaluable partner, are talking about who needs to ask what question to preserve evidence best when a victim shows up at an ER. If a question comes from law enforcement on his, on the body camera, that may not be admissible, but if it comes from Christine as a statement comes, the answer goes to Christine as a statement made for medical diagnosis, that may be preserved for evidence, and that matters, because as you probably know, very often victims in the criminal matters are reluctant to appear and testify. So Ms. Zurfus is way smarter than I am on this issue, if you want to hear from her on that, but those are some, some specific examples of the gaps that we've closed directly because of this task force. Thank you.
Yeah, Pavan.
Give me just one, one more quick example, and that is in, just in the protection order space. So there are two different types of protection orders. There's a domestic violence protection order, and there's a civil protection order, a stalking protection order. And so it's understanding to the point that the judge has made, what are the right questions you need to ask on the front end to make sure that we're directing people in the right way? So one of the gaps that you have is if the, depending on the relationship between the victim and the perpetrator, is it more appropriate to file a civil protection order or domestic violence protection order? Because the way that we are physically structured, that means you got to go to a different building, whether you're going to 1,000 Main Street or 800 Broadway. And so by closing the gap, by having everybody talking to each other, by, with our Help Center now having someone both in Domestic Relations and at the main courthouse, we can not only advise correctly on that, but we can do a very warm handoff to make sure that, hey, you are supposed to be here, make sure that you're in the right spot. If you're not, if you're in the wrong building, we can get you to where you need to go. Here's the person you need to talk to. Here's the name. Here's their picture. We're going to make sure that we take care of you. So that is just one another example of, the law is somewhat confusing if you don't know it very well, and having all these stakeholders at the table, we can advise victims so much better about where they need to be and what exactly they need to file.
Thank you. Thank you. It's very helpful to better understand the process and some of the challenges. I, one last quick question. Is it, is it Dr. Hassert? Are you a doctor? Okay, we'll just call, call you Christine Hassert then instead. If you could come forward, I, you mentioned strangulation. I've been made aware of this in the past. Just very quickly, is the incidence of strangulation increasing dramatically in this community? And can you tell us why, if the, if the answer is yes, can you tell us why you think that is?
That's a really good question. So when I took over this role in 2021, I started collecting all of the data on our cases, and I noticed that our reports of non-fatal strangulation went up 93% from 2020 to 2025. I don't know necessarily that the incidents have gone up, but I think that we're getting better at assessing for them. I, I can't exactly tell you if that's true or not. That's just from my own experience. I know years ago, and, and as a community, none of us really understood how to assess for it. We, people would just look at the neck if they reported that they were choked, which is the term that they usually use, and then if they didn't see anything physically, they would just move on. And then I know doing this years ago, we would ask people, were you strangled? They would say no. We would check the box. We would move on. But we now know that people don't really refer to it as strangulation, so we've changed, that's part of our process that we've changed. We don't ask people if they were strangled. We ask them, was pressure applied to your neck or were you choked? And typically, it's a yes, 70 to 75% of the time, and then we go down a whole other rabbit hole. So I think that as a community, we're just getting more educated on how to better assess for it, and then we educate them. It's important to speak their language, but then it's important to educate them that, no, you, it's really strangulation, and it's, it's, you know, it's more significant than you think it is. Does that answer your question?
Yes, the yes. Thank you very much. Yeah, no, I, I just promoted you, though, huh?
Thank God.
Thank you for, for weighing in. Commissioner Summer Odomis.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your presentations, and President Dreehouse, you were asking all the right questions, because this is not Domestic Violence Month, this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And so we're trying to, to get out there and have people better understand what's going on in the community. I have so many comments, I'm going to kind of shorten them a little bit. There are so many people that are suffering in silence, and they don't have to. I got an email last night, actually, not directly to me, but the person was saying there's no help out there, and I, my jaw was broken and all, and it was sent to me. And there is help out there, and that's what I want to let people know. I was looking for adjectives to describe you guys. And so you're just, I just used to, because I was going on, just phenomenal. This task force is phenomenal and just incredible. In less than two years, or maybe about two years, you guys not only formulated a group, a panel, a task force, but the expansion of it. You looked at the gaps, it was said earlier by Pavan, that were there, and you filled those gaps. There are many more gaps, but I think you guys don't know, or maybe you do, that you're superstars and what you're doing and the lives that you're changing. I wanted to bring up CEO Raquel Howard Smith. Not bring her up, but I wanted to talk about her. She had a spot on television a couple days ago. Phenomenal. And she talked about how people are afraid to talk about domestic violence. It was like, you know, you don't want to go there, and she had all these activities that were going on, and it just, you know, October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we talk more about that, and both of them are very important, but because domestic violence oftentimes reflects on the male, who is the majority of those that are doing the damage to, to our women, but as you were saying, there are men that also impact it. But to see it coming to the forefront of our community is just awesome. It's important, and I don't know who said, I think it was Flopman who said it, it's important to follow through. I mean, if you're watching, and things are going on, and it doesn't feel right, you have to follow through. It's not enough just to come down and have a complaint, but you have to follow through, and I know that it's hard for that to happen. And that's why I think the domestic violence numbers, they're going up, which is not a good thing, but it is a good thing, because people are recognizing, this is not how people should be treating me. This is not right, and I'm going to stand up for it, and that's really hard to do. Two more comments, I believe. I can't read my writing. So I am a survivor, and so I've used many of the services that were available years ago. Some of them were not available, but they saved my life, and I'd say that every year, and I'll keep saying that. I'm very proud of, especially Women Helping Women was there for me. So I am a survivor, and you can be also, if you're watching. It's hard, but you can do it and have a better life than you have now. And finally, my personal goal, I see the pink, and, and I know the NFL wears their pink. My personal goal is to get the NFL to start wearing purple, and I'm going to start with the Cincinnati Bengals, and, and that would just be great. I mean, that, this subject is hard to talk about, but it needs to be talked about. So that's my personal goal. So thank all of you for, for what you do. You're superstars, so. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you very much. Let me thank everyone who is participating in this, this task force. And as we, we look at, at Hamilton County with the opioid crisis, and we bring all the partners together, from law enforcement to community, to legal, to the court system, and it has worked. It, it continues to be an issue, but we're able to have an infrastructure that is in place. And so I look at this as the same thing. Now we have an infrastructure in place, dealing with this issue of domestic violence, and looking at it in a holistic way. I remember when I was on, when I first, my first election with City Council, and at that time, we basically had Women Helping Women, and we had some with the YWCA, and we would vote for dollars, but they were still kind of out there in an island by themselves. And so it matters in terms of the leadership that is in this room, and I want to just say to you, it matters who the sheriff is.
Thank you.
To bring law enforcement to say, we're going to not only talk about it or wear ribbons and those kind of things, we're going to put together an infrastructure that will look at this in a holistic way, and understanding that law enforcement is one component, but you've got to have other components. It matters to have a judge in Domestic Relations Court that's not just when you come to court, she's got the robe or he got the robe on. This judge has said, wait a minute, we're going to have an infrastructure. So Judge Flopman, I want to commend you as well with the sheriff office. Without the two of you, we could, we could still have these organizations and doing what we're doing, but we would be doing it in a silo-type of way. It matters that the CEO of the YWCA, you could pick up the phone and say, I need a place to house this blueprint. It matters. The CEO said, let's get it done. It matters as we, as a board, we have put money into divert, but I like that divert said, we're not satisfied with just some municipalities. We're going to expand, and we've got to do this countywide, and they have done a good job reaching out, working with other municipalities within Hamilton County to create. You can't have an infrastructure if we only have it in one spot or another spot. It also matters, I said, Women Helping Women is still around. Michelle Young just hit me up, they've got a partnership they're doing at the Art Museum with the, an event. So now the art museum is involved. It really matters, and even though they're involved, we got to have an infrastructure. And so when we look at this PowerPoint that has the clerk of courts and Pavan saying, wait a minute, when they come here, we need this, and then have Judge Flopman say, wait a minute, you're not going to leave here, we're going to bring the office here, so you don't have to get on a bus or leave or go somewhere else, we're bringing it in-house. a bus or leave or go somewhere else. We're bringing it in-house to have the prosecutor's office. We're here. We're ready to activate and get involved. And then the why, we were so excited about a project that we have put in our budget, I think it was $400,000 possibly. We're gonna have a place, because when people leave their homes, right, and they have to go somewhere else, they don't want to necessarily go into a place where they just got everybody. Some people want to, they have privacy. But now we have a facility where you could go, and you'll have your own kitchen, you've got your own rooms, your children got their own bedrooms. That's huge. I think we're one of only two in the country. And I want to thank the YWCA leadership under Raquel Howard Smith and her team to say, we've got to have that, because one, you got to be comfortable when you do leave to go somewhere when you're dealing with something like this. So, since night Police Department, probation, I mean, and then to have TriHealth step up, because we do need the data. We do need to understand the, the medical side of this. And I'm very impressed with your cares program. We have now created an infrastructure that is 360, and I'm glad that you all are meeting because sometimes the needs change. But you have the infrastructure that can pivot if necessary and when necessary. So you came last year with, hey, we got this idea. We're getting ready to start meeting. We're gonna meet every two weeks. I said, oh, Lord Sheriff, I don't know how we go, every two weeks you meeting. But now you come back today with results, with a blueprint, with a institutionalization of action where people have somewhere one stop to go and not have to try to navigate and figure all this out. So just want to say congratulations and great work. And again, it shows Hamilton County coming together and all the different partners. I mean, UC Law, I'm looking on here, Emergency Communications, I mean, you've thought of everything. Ohio Crime Victim Justice Center, Legal Aid, Women and Girls Commission. This is one of the initiatives from the Women and Girls Commission. And even animal care is involved. So this is, you've thought of everything, and I'm glad that we have an institutionalized blueprint. And Judge, I appreciate what you were saying. You said, as people move up, we don't want to lose the institutional knowledge. We will now be able to hand them, here is the blueprint. And so the next person could come in, and we don't lose any, any ground. So anxious to see what happens with the blueprint. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all again for being here. We do have item, what was item number one, that we would like you to stick around for if you don't mind. We've got a proclamation. Commissioner?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. We've got a-
I do have one comment when you're done.
Okay. Well, why don't you comment now, because I'm gonna move right into the proclamation.
Okay. I'm just sitting here thinking about when I came here over six and a half years ago, there was no talk about domestic violence and how this has evolved. This is just really, really personal. And I asked the board to support the acknowledgement of awareness for domestic violence. And I, I thank the board for that.
Commissioner O'Dumas, I do recall when you came to the commission, and one of your first objectives was to ask law enforcement to wear the purple ribbons. That was our first initiative to bring it to the forefront, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a proclamation recognizing October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Commissioner O'Dumas.
Whereas since 2019, during the month of October, Hamilton County works to recognize the work conducted to mourn those who have lost their lives because of domestic violence, celebrate those who have survived domestic violence, and connect those who work to end violence. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month developed from a day of unity under the work of the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence, now it has evolved into a month-long awareness campaign. And whereas, with survivors always constitutes the theme for Domestic Violence Awareness Month in 2025, which allows us to explore what it means to be in partnership with survivors towards safety, support, and solidarity.
And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a time for communities and advocacy organizations to connect with the public and one another to raise awareness, uplift survivor stories, and provide additional resources to individuals. Whereas, a survivor of domestic violence refers to any individual regardless of gender, age, sexuality, et cetera, who has experienced any form of abuse which encompasses physical, sexual, financial, or emotional abuse. Whereas, it is estimated each year that approximately over 12 million individuals in the United States are victims of intimate partner violence, and millions of children are exposed to domestic violence each year.
And whereas, it is crucial to continue to support programs and activities aimed at domestic violence awareness and intervention in domestic violence prevention in the United States. And whereas, Hamilton County is proud to partner with community organizations such as Women Helping Women and the YWCA of Cincinnati to provide resources to survivors of domestic violence and honors these organizations for their dedication to domestic violence awareness and prevention. And so now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Ohio does hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in all of Hamilton County. If you all don't mind, we would like to present this and then take a photo. Would it be easier for us to stay here and then to come up? Yeah, what, let's do that. So please, please come up.
Can I just say something though? Because you, you guys came today, and normally my colleagues will allow me to lead the charge on domestic violence, how we want to do it. And I said, well, I don't know if we're gonna recognize any groups this time, because we always recognize the same ones. And then I said, they're coming today doing such great work. Let's surprise them with the proclamation because of all the hard work that you're doing. So that's all I wanted to say.
Please come on.
Thank you.
Judge, you and I maybe stand like-
I don't want to be seen here.
Here we go. Is this good? It'll be good. Some of this side. Okay. So.
I don't want to say.
Hang on a second. So I'll, I'll tell you guys what I tell the recruits, which I took a lot of pictures of groups of recruits. Blade your body. So blading is standing a little sideways and then looking this way. So that we can all fit in the, in the photo.
Are we even balanced?
There you go.
Aren't we balanced?
Yeah, I think we are.
You hop in there, as long as we can see everybody's face. You're looking at Amanda first, and then we're gonna go. So Amanda first.
You in the back with the green sweater. You can back a little bit this way. And then there you go.
She's not up here. Try out.
Oh, they look.
I noticed they had on the same outfit, so.
Everybody just window down. Like, just take one step back so you can, there you go.
Everyone's wearing their-
It's perfect.
Tried to hide. Not today.
Not today.
And we can go at the same time. Ready? One, two, three. You guys look great. All right. Thank you. Everybody good?
Okay.
Here we go.
Let's see here.
Got it.
All right. Great.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
We know nurses, we're the doctors. You guys run the show.
Right.
I did good today, because you just got to.
Oh, send it to me.
Okay, no problem.
That was good.
I thought my last comments were the first part of my reading the proclamation.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I put you first. All right. We are going to move into our next agenda item, which is the Ohio River Way presentation. I understand Forrest Clevenger is here. There you are. Welcome. We're glad to see you. Give Brewster our regards, will you, when you see him? So thank you for being here.
Thank you all so much for having me today. It's an honor to be with you all. My name is Forrest Clevenger. I'm the executive director of the Ohio River Way. Brewster Rhodes, my board chair, sends his regrets. He had Family Matter come up. So I'm glad to be here with you today. Perfect. So the Ohio River Way, in our shortest explanation of what we are, is we facilitate large landscape collaboration. So we are the connective tissue for communities along the Ohio River to collaborate on issues related to tourism, economic development, and outdoor recreation. So we work on large landscape collaboration at the intersection of recreation and restoration. This is our geography. We work primarily 308 miles from Ashland, Kentucky, and Ironton, Ohio, down to West Point, south of Louisville. Hamilton County is right in the center of that geographically, but, but also in so many ways as a leader on river recreation. So we primarily serve the communities. Again, so localities and counties will buy into our work as do its members. That includes Hamilton County. So you all have contributed $5,000 a year to support our work. Cincinnati chips in $10,000 a year, as do counties up and down this stretch. So as a recreation group, we serve the user group, the paddlers, the cyclists, all of them, but, but mainly serve the communities. And our mission is to help people find adventure, to inspire care for the land and water, and to boost the economies of Ohio River communities. And that is a volunteer of ours from Hamilton County, Israel Bunnell. And I'll get back to him in a moment. We do four main things. We work on a braided network of trails, rebranding the Ohio River Corridor, which, which as you may know, the Ohio River does not have the best reputation. We do some outdoor programming, and we work on land conservation. And I'll briefly run through each of those things. So to start, the braided network of land and water trails. So several years back, a group of paddlers started in Cincinnati in a 30-foot canoe and paddled 30 hours to Louisville. And they started dreaming of what it would be like to map all of the assets along the way, all of the, the localities, all the stuff to see, all the stuff to do, where to camp, and make that available as a tourism resource. And they started doing that in partnership with OKI here in Cincinnati, and then started putting signs up. And that mapping and that signage is really the backbone of our water trail. So we have 74 public access points along the Ohio River. In addition to an interactive map we have online, we also have segment maps, like this one here focused on Cincinnati and Northern Kentucky, so the paddlers can print these out and take them with them as they are enjoying their on-water expeditions, which I just met some folks at River Roots that, that had printed these out. So in addition to the map, just a description of all the resources here in this area as well. So on top of all the fun stuff, there is a huge focus on safety in all that we do. The Ohio River is not like other waterways. There are unique safety considerations. So we have a safety guide online, links to conditions, so folks understand the quality of the water and the, the stage and the flow and the weather, frankly, that they need to understand before going out. We also work on events that actually get people on the trail. So the Ohio River Way founded Paddle Fest a couple decades ago, and it now benefits Adventure Crew, a nonprofit here in Hamilton County that works to get kids into the outdoors for free. So every year, about 1,500 to 2,000 people will go out on the river and paddle. And it's a wonderful event. If you haven't participated before, I would really encourage you to. We also have the great Ohio River Swim, which, which both of these events are now managed by Adventure Crew, but our, our board chair at the Ohio River Way helps lead them. At the swim this year, we had about 250 people that hop in the river, which might seem crazy, but, but really, the water quality has improved so much that vast majority of the time, it is safe for contact recreation like swimming. So take all these things together, and we reached the standard that this June, the U.S. Secretary of the Interior, at the recommendation of the National Park Service, designated our route a national water trail, putting us literally on the map nationally as a destination for folks that want to come do multi-day paddling or multi-day boating trips. So it is not every day as a small local nonprofit, we get to talk with the Washington Post. So this really did make a national splash in the recreation scene. There were 387 miles added to the National Recreation Trail System this year, and we were 308 of that. That took contiguous support of all of our communities. So we had around 100 letters of support representing every single locality, everyone that has a boat ramp, and every state. And that, that letter up on the top right is from Andy Beshear. So we were grateful to, to interstate support in this endeavor. I said, a braided network of trails at the start. If we had just a water trail, it wouldn't be braided. And, and land trails are a key part of that, and, and harder than a water trail, because you can't just draw a line on a map like you can with the river. So we are growing our focus on cycling. And Cincinnati and Hamilton County are again at the heart of that. So the Ohio River Way helped raise $10 million to get the Crown started, which led to the creation of tri-state trails. Again, an effort we helped get started, but no longer manage. You'll see, they had the Tour de Crown this year, which about 700 people came out in Hamilton County and participated. The Crown is a 34-mile loop that's about 65% complete, that will be a trail that surrounds Cincinnati. We want to have connectivity beyond individual communities, though. So what we're advocating is shared use paths within municipalities, and then bike lanes, or at least improved shoulders on the roads connecting them, which leads to some news we got just a few weeks ago. ODOT has awarded us $275,000 for a planning study for that regional route, following that model of shared use paths in communities and bike lanes between them on the country roads, primarily for this geography on US-50 in Hamilton County, and then US-52 going all the way out to Chesapeake across the river from Huntington, West Virginia. So I think this would be a two or three-day cycling trip if you are a cycling enthusiast. So you all provided a letter of support for that, and, and thank you so very much for that. We're very excited to share this news. All right. Rebranding the Ohio River Corridor. Folks think if they go on the river, they're gonna come out with three arms. And while several decades ago, it, it really was not very safe, things are much, much better. ORSCENCO, the Ohio River Valley Water Sanitation Commission, based here in Cincinnati, does water quality testing that folks can use and shows that in general, it is safe for recreation. And we promote that. So we have a visitor's guide that I, I believe each of you got a copy of. This is the second edition we've done. We had 80,000 copies, which was about 13 tons, delivered to 93 state parks, 18 interstate welcome centers, all, all through our communities in Indiana, Kentucky, and Ohio. And our goal is for folks to see the river is bursting at the seams with opportunities for recreation, celebrating that natural beauty, history, and culture. Of course, we have an online presence as well, social media, our website. We keep all of that up to date as best we can to connect with folks where they are. Also helped with a documentary not too long ago, available on PBS and YouTube. We had 15 screenings, including one here in Hamilton County, showcasing the beauty of the river and some of the challenges it is facing. All right. Outdoor programming. You may have seen before, we do some work in 30-foot Voyager canoes that can seat 15 people. Annually, we will paddle our whole route. Next year, we are planning even longer, about 500 miles over 24 days. And this is really an interdisciplinary expedition. Folks pay to participate. They volunteer. We have students come for free and do research as well. It is a heck of a lot of fun. I believe Isabel with WVXU is in the room, and she paddled with us this year as well. So it's, it's a fun adventure, but it's also really for us, the opportunity to connect with local officials and all of these small- and shows that in general it is safe for recreation. And we promote that. So we have a visitor's guide that I, I believe each of you got a copy of. This is the second edition we've done. We had 80,000 copies, which was about 13 tons, delivered to 93 state parks, 18 interstate welcome centers, all, all through our communities in Indiana, Kentucky, and Ohio. And our goal is for folks to see the river is bursting at the seams with opportunities for recreation, celebrating that natural beauty, history, and culture. Of course, we have an online presence as well, social media, our website. We keep all of that up to date as best we can to connect with folks where they are. Also helped with a documentary not too long ago, available on PBS and YouTube. We had 15 screenings, including one here in Hamilton County, showcasing the beauty of the river and some of the challenges it is facing. All right, outdoor programming. You may have seen before, we do some work in 30-foot Voyager canoes that can seat 15 people. Annually, we will paddle our whole route. Next year, we are planning even longer, about 500 miles over 24 days. And this is really an interdisciplinary expedition. Folks pay to participate. They volunteer. We have students come for free and do research as well. It is a heck of a lot of fun. I believe Isabel with WVXU is in the room and she paddled with us this year as well. So it's, it's a fun adventure, but it's also really for us the opportunity to connect with local officials in all of these small, especially the rural communities, to then collaborate further afterwards on various regional applications. We had a 55-foot houseboat join us this year for citizen science research, doing biodiversity assessments, water quality assessments. And this was, you know, a boat that belonged to a volunteer of ours here in Hamilton County. We are also now expanding to do youth expeditions and we'll have two five-day coed programs in next summer. And we are ecstatic to be doing that. And finally, we also do work on land conservation. So we have this, there are many islands along the Ohio River. 22 are part of a national wildlife refuge. We are advocating for the rest of them to join as part of that because really these are one of the most special parts of the river, if you're recreating, to go visit them because they're wild, they're beautiful, and they're absolutely incredible campsites. They're also a favorite of boaters. OKI, our partner here in Hamilton County, has also mapped priority lands for conservation along our entire route within two miles of the river. We want to conserve the islands. We want to conserve the beautiful views. So if one community has some beautiful mountains on the other side of the river, we want to work across states to make sure that that land can be conserved in one way or another, if appropriate. I mean, there's always a tension between development versus, what is appropriate development versus what is appropriate land conservation? But, but we're helping facilitate that regionally. And finally, a few last things worth mentioning before, before wrapping up. So in Ohio, a couple of years ago, we had the biggest news in any of our states when Governor Dewine invested 152 million into 19 Appalachian communities, primarily on the Ohio River. So for instance, the 213-person village of Higginsport got $6.3 million, $30,000 a person for waterfront redevelopment. These developments, these investments are huge for these Appalachian communities. And while this does not impact Hamilton County directly, I, I think this is important to mention as part of making a regional destination for someone that is coming to do a multi-day trip. Because Hamilton County is an anchor for folks that would be coming to or from these Appalachian communities. Ohio also in 2024 created the Ohio River Commission of Ohio, a new state authority focused on economic development, marine cargo, terminal operations, and tourism. And they've invested a couple million dollars into getting that going. But a new state agency with the power to do, work on these regional projects along the river. And on a smaller scale, we work with some local, local small businesses to get kayak rental kiosks going. And we do have several in, in the greater Cincinnati region. These are for folks that they can just rock up, pull out their phone, rent a kayak for a little bit, and go enjoy a tributary or the Ohio River. They also have some long-term storage rental options if you want to just keep your kayak there instead of having to lug it back and forth. All right, finally, I want to speak to ecological restoration. It's a really key relationship here. The more folks get out and appreciate our natural beauty, the more folks care about it, right? And the cleaner the river is, the more folks are, are going to feel comfortable recreating on it as well. So there's, there's a really important relationship there. And we do support restoration efforts. That's my former boss, Congressman Morgan, Morgan McGarvey of Louisville. And he is a Democrat and is co-leading with a Republican of Indiana, Representative Aaron Houchen, the Ohio River Restoration Program Act. This is modeled after the efforts in the Great Lakes region. And it was introduced last Congress and they are reintroducing it currently, requesting $350 million a year annually for five years to restore the Ohio River Basin. All of Hamilton County is in the basin and would be eligible for these funds. And it is a comprehensive funding stream. It would fund efforts related to clean water, habitat restoration, flooding mitigation, as well as recreational infrastructure. A lot of money spread out over a large geography, but it's something that we would anticipate would be annually recurring. So I, I think that is important to flag for, for you all because this money would flow to federal agencies, the states, and to localities and nonprofits. At the policy level, we were also out here on October 4th helping pick up trash as part of Orsenco's end of season finale, which is a wonderful experience. In the greater Cincinnati area, we picked up 20 tons of debris, 17 tons of that trash, three tons recycling. So it is a joy in my work to get to, to work from the individual level of pulling a tire out, to then going and working on the policy level as well. And with that, you know, I'll flag it's just, there's a lot of energy around the river right now, both for ecological restoration and for outdoor recreation. And I think there is an opportunity because of some, so much of the work happening here in Hamilton County and because folks like Hamilton County have invested into our work to create a regional recreation corridor that benefits so many communities. So thank you all so very much for your time. It was an honor to be here. I'm glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Really appreciate it. I wanted to note a couple of things. The one is that Paddle Fest, which you noted draws, how many people to this region?
About 1,500 to 2,000 a year.
It's amazing to be on the river on that day and see these people coming in from all over the country to participate in Paddles Fest. So, so much of this work is related to, as you say, restoration, but also tourism and economic development for our purposes. Yeah, heads and beds and sales tax. So I really appreciate the work you're doing there. And then I know there was a cleanup for River Roots. There were 400 volunteers, both on the shore and on the river, cleaning up tires and garbage so that the people that were on those cruises would have a very good impression of Cincinnati and the surrounding area. So thank you for your work in doing that cleanup. And I just wanted to note also that this board has invested primarily when it comes to not only the river, but also some of the tributaries, in particular the Mill Creek, which runs straight up the middle of the county and incorporates communities that oftentimes don't see investment, but yet we're investing in recreational opportunities for those communities. So the Mill Creek is a really critical tributary for this commission because we have tried to support the work that's going on there, but both by way of the, the Mill Creek itself, but also a bike way there to provide some access to those communities, to recreation, but also to the Kroger and to things that are very practical for their needs in those communities. So thank you for noting that. I have one question for you. So I, I can't find it in this packet, but you had a picture of the Ohio River Commission, which you said is fairly new. Is there a representative from Hamilton County on that commission? Or from, maybe I should say from this region on that commission?
I, I believe, so, so I believe that would be Ed Alf. He, he leads Sea Ray of Cincinnati, a boat sales company. But I believe he is from Hamilton County.
Okay.
So, so the, the appointees are not geographic from my understanding, but I believe-
Wanted to note that because as I look about the, related to the investment of the governor and I applaud the investment in the Appalachian areas in Ohio, often they too don't see a lot of investment. So that, it sounds like that was really impactful. But, you know, in Hamilton County, obviously wasn't part of that. But I just want to make sure that the voice of Hamilton County, since as you say, we are kind of the center of the map and a critical piece to all of this, just want to make sure our voice is heard when these conversations are happening at the state level. So I did see the back of Brewster's head, I think, at, at the meeting. So just, just want to make sure that the region's well represented. It, it's not geographic, but it is geographic. I mean, so much of what the river represents is related to Hamilton County and all the other river towns along the way. So thank, thank you again for the presentation. Appreciate it. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you and thank you for your presentation. It's certainly important to keep our river clean and also the activities that go on there. And I, I participate in the maritime committee. I think I've seen you on the, maybe a virtual of that or not?
Perhaps, yeah.
Okay, but they talk about not necessarily the, the quality of the river, but what's going up and down the river. So extremely interesting to me. And I was trying to get focused. I could feel your enthusiasm about all of this. And I saw your picture in here a few times also.
Oh, you lying. That is not true. Although I did do Paddle Fest.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, but tell Brewster also that I said hello. Thank you for all the work that you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll just join with you. I'll be honest though. Brewster, when this first came out many, many, many years ago, Brewster was out front on this. I think those were the days up at the State House and he would come and say, "We gotta do this. We gotta do this." And they were doing a lot out at Coney Island at that time, in that area. Just wanted to say on here, this is a very nice, slick, well-put-together visitor's guide. In fact, this is a lot, you know, in terms of the type of paper and the photography and the slickness and all of that. I mean, this is even more expensive than the Convention Visitor's Bureau Tourism Guide. But it's well put together and great photography. I mean, the photography is-
Those are all volunteers.
Is this the Ohio River?
Yes, ma'am.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
I mean, the photography is very, very nice.
I will, I will share, share your appreciation.
Yeah, please share that.
With volunteers. Thank you.
Yeah, they captured it very well. So I just wanted to just highlight that and join with my colleagues what they've said earlier. But the photography, well put together. So yeah, I think it's a real good piece put together.
Thank you all very much.
Right, thank you so much for being here. Again, give Brewster our regards. Thank you. Thank you. All right.
I said he was in a wreck before he came here, but he still came.
Oh.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you for coming through.
Hope you are, yeah, hope everything goes well the rest of the day for you. Yeah. And that all irons out. So, all right, Commissioners, we have nothing else on our agenda, so I am going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Dreamhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.